School boards. The car was always going.
Right.
Sound like, ah?
Odd number.
Yeah. Are we the only ones then?
Uh, maybe Brandon may join us in a minute.
Okay.
All right, a quorum being present. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order for planning and zoning at 6:01 PM. Is that too loud? All right. Citizens may appear before the Planning and Zoning Commission to address items not listed on the agenda in accordance with procedural rules as determined by the meeting chair and by submitting a public comment form to the chairman no later than the conclusion of the last agenda item and call to order. Anyone wish to, from the public, wish to come up and make a statement? Okay. All right. We're gonna move on to the first item on the agenda. Discuss, consider, and act upon the approval of the minutes of the meeting from June 15, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. Sharon makes a motion.
I second it.
All right. Nicole seconds. All in favor? All right. None opposed? Item number two. Discuss, consider, and act upon a preliminary plat for Hilltop Ranch.
Board. So, we're getting close to getting this Hilltop Ranch project underway. They submitted a preliminary plat. Actually, it should have been on the agenda last month. That's my fault. But we did go ahead and approve the PD a month ago. They've submitted all their documentation. The engineer has approved. If Tim has some other additional comments you wanna make, feel free. The city staff, after reviewing the plat, feels comfortable in recommending approval for this Hilltop Ranch.
Okay. You don't have any questions? No, I don't think so.
So, I'll make a motion to accept the preliminary plats.
Okay. Sharon's making a motion to approve.
I second it.
All right. Nicole seconds. All in favor? All right. None opposed. It's unanimous? Sorry. Let me get back to my agenda here. All right. Number three. Discuss, consider, and act upon the preliminary and final plat for the Bethel Baptist Church Division.
B and Z Board. Same, similar kinda situation. They are sectioning off Bethel Baptist Church from the old parsonage behind it in order to sell the house separately. There is no word yet on a sale of the church. I don't think that's the anticipation at this point, but they're just dividing the property so that they can sell the house if they wanna do that. These plats have been reviewed by our engineering team and city staff recommends approval.
Okay. Any questions? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion.
All right. Sharon's motioning.
I will second.
To approve. And then Nicole is seconding. And all, all in favor? All right. It's unanimous. Motion passes. And so, we'll adjourn the meeting at 6:05 PM.
It's down here.
It's down by the batteries.
It's below.
Yeah.
Does it?
No, sure.
Testing.
Good evening. There being a regular session. Well, I have pulled this back. There being a quorum, this regular session of the City of Ha, City, excuse me, of the Howl City Council is hereby called to order on Tuesday, July 15, 2025, at 6:08 PM, under the Open Meetings Act of the State of Texas. Members present, Mr. Ingram, Mr. Price, Mr. Tyler, Mr. Woods, Mr. Whitfield, and myself, Ms. McDonald. If you will, please remove your hats and silence your cell phones and let's stand for the pledge and the prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Down for the Texas flag. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I should have said the prayer first, but apologized, but say it now. Today's Wednesday also, right? Heavenly Father, we just thank you for giving us an opportunity to serve the city and the citizens. We ask that you will give us wisdom and discernment as we move forward making decisions. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you. The City Council invites citizens to speak to the council on topics, sorry, I'm moving down, on topics on the agenda not already scheduled for public hearing or on any topic on which the City Council has authority. Citizens may address the council for a maximum of two minutes. The council is unable to respond to or discuss any issues that are brought up during this section that are not already on the agenda, other than to make a statement of specific factual information in response to a citizen's inquiry or to recite existing policy in response to the inquiry. Except for public hearing items, please submit the public comment form to the mayor. I have not received any. Does anyone have any public comments that they wanna make? And if so, I would need those comment forms now. All right. Moving on. Mayor comments. Howe-Hump Day Breakfast, Networking Breakfast, is held every first Wednesday of the month from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM here in Summit Gardens. The next Networking Breakfast will be held on Wednesday, August 6, 2025. Then we're gonna move on to our, the mayor brag moment. I first want to brag on citizen Archie Sutton. Archie, Mr. Sutton has been very gracious in his generosity in volunteering his time and knowledge as he has installed our new camera and sound system here at Summit Gardens. Can we have an applause for him? He is not here tonight. He did not feel that he, unless he walked in and I did not see him, he did not feel like he needed to be recognized, but I think he does. But, cuz we really do appreciate his time and his energy installing these for us. This is helping not just the council, but citizens as well. Next up, we have Justin Johnson from Public Works. Is Justin here? I don't see him. So, we're going to, City Administrator Monty Walker reported to me that Justin identified, assessed, and fixed a culvert on East Hanning Street that was ready to collapse. Had the culvert collapsed, this may have caused additional problems. Mr. Johnson, his actions were very quick and deliberate benefiting the citizens of Howe. Additionally, the City Administrator, Administrator Monty Walker reports that he receives numerous weekly compliments for Mr. Johnson's professionalism and courteous demeanor. The City of Howe is very fortunate to have Mr. Johnson on our team, a team member who is always willing to serve the citizens of Howe in a timely and efficient manner. Let's give him an applause, please. And certainly not last, but not least, is our Officer Terry McFadden. And he is here this evening, and I see him back there, and I'm gonna have him come up front here in a minute. On June 24, 2025, City Administrator Monty Walker reported to me that Officer McFadden discovered a major leak on Highway 5. This leak was off into, off the road and into the trees. Officer McFadden potentially saved the City of Howe a large financial burden through his vil, uh, 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 diligence and quick action to report the water break. Additionally, on July 21, excuse me, not July 21, but July 1, 2025, Chief Jake Sullivan reported to me that he received a positive review from one of our citizens regarding Officer McFadden. Citizens of the City of Howe benefited by Officer McFadden's vigilance and quick action to stop criminal trespassing from an illegal dumper at Glenbrook Apartments. The citizen reported that they have been battling this problem for years to no avail, and Officer McFadden's efforts to resolve these issues has positively affected citizens living in this apartment complex. Furthermore, the citizen expressed Officer McFadden's behavior as being professional and having a courteous demeanor. The City of Howe is very fortunate to have officers such as you, Officer McFadden, who care about our citizens and others within our community. Your efforts describe what true public servants exemplify, a team ready to assist at any time and any way possible. The Howe PD is making a difference, and it is noticeable. Come on up, sir. Let's give him a hand.
Do we, can you take a picture?
Yeah.
Counsel, let's take a picture.
Moving on to consent items. These items consist of non-controversial or housekeeping items required by law. Items may be considered individual by any council member making such a request prior to a motion and vote on the consent items. One, discuss, consider, and act upon consent items which are marked by an asterisk. These include minutes of the regular council meeting, June 17, 2025, bills being paid for the month, detailed check register report, statement of revenue and expenditures, South State Bank secured deposits, June 2025, recap and standings, June 2025. Does the council wish to discuss any of these items separately? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
I'm motion to approve.
All right. Sean is making a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Billy makes a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. Discussion number, discussion item, departmental reports. First up is the Howe Police Department. Chief Sullivan, please.
Mayor, council, before we get started, I wanna kinda take a moment. As y'all know, I have a very diverse team that is not just dedicated to serving law enforcement. My lieutenant, Seth Sparks, that works for me, is part of a family band, Texas Country Band, and they have been asked to go down to central Texas and put on a concert for all proceeds to benefit the victims of the flood there in Kerrville. So, he'll be out of commission as we can to see him and his family go down to play in his band and raise money for the victims of the flood. With that being said, Officer McFadden has agreed to cover his shift so that we make sure that we have ample coverage to service our city. So, you know, this is something that just shows, once again, our team is willing to do what it takes to not only serve our community, but that of our state.
That's wonderful.
So, the next part of it is, I think, you may have saw I did a press release here a few weeks ago that officially begun our accreditation process. I was notified by Texas Municipal League that they did, in fact, pay our initial assessment to start that process, so we are well underway and officially become accredited. Our goal is to have that done by the end of the year. We have purchased some software earlier this summer that hopefully will allow us to do that at that speed. It's the same software the Texas Police Chiefs Association is using to try to make this easier for agencies across the state and limit the cost that they endure. As we get into the council report, as you may have seen in the document, that our call volume for the month of June has increased 80% compared to June of 2024. As you've heard me say, from time to time, we're running into more issues where we'll have officers tied up and might necessarily have an officer to respond for the call. The construction project along 75 has certainly created that challenge, more so than we kinda expected early on. We're starting to see anywhere between three to five accidents a week versus we may have only one a week. So, we're getting more and more of accidents. We're getting more dangerous types of accidents. Thanks to fire, they have always brought their apparatus out to make sure our team is safe, but it's also created some call volume issues as well. We have hired a new officer to replace Officer Bean. Justin Light will be joining us on July the 28th. Mr. Light comes from us as a US Army veteran, startlingly in the reserves. He also comes from the Hood County Sheriff's Office. He is a supervisor overseeing eight personnel that join in our team. Many years ago, Mr. Light worked for me in Somerville as part of our interdiction team, and he will be doing those duties along with doing patrol as we try to curtail narcotics in our community. For the month of June, we did 32 hours of in-service. August 31 is our end of our training cycle as required by the Texas Commission of Law Enforcement. We'll have two officers this week that'll be finalizing the mandatory training that we needed to be in compliance department-wide. As I shared with you earlier, we had 209 calls for service compared to 116 in 2024. We're averaging about a 42% increase a year over last year in increasing total call volume. We are currently working on National Night Out. As y'all well know, that hasn't been something that's been here in quite some time. We are working with some different vendors and some different things to do National Night Out here in downtown. Later in this year, we'll ask if we can close downtown so we can have some events and ensure the safety of the public that chooses to come out. We, as I shared with y'all early on, when we joined the law enforcement support office, that is our program that allows us to obtain military equipment. We completed our annual audit that's required by the Texas Department of Public Safety. Obviously, there were no issues there, but that took care of that. Our crime prevention technology, I got approval today. The Techsty is waiting on their final signature, so that will allow us to move to our final phase for our flock cameras and hopefully get those up in the next 90 days.
Wonderful. Does the council have any questions or comments for?
So, just to pile on the Officer McFadden's accolades. So, I've been around town the last couple of weeks with the end of school, getting the parking lot, the high school cleaned up, and other booster club-related stuff. And I'm not out of my truck and doing stuff somewhere where I probably shouldn't be, you know, at the school where nobody should be there. And it's not six, eight minutes, and he's rolling through the parking lot cuz he sees something out of place, and he's there checking it out to see what's going on.
Glad to hear that. You know, I, you know, my team works hard to try to make sure every shift, to cover every road, at least for some visibility, and to try to engage our businesses and our citizens on top of traffic enforcement and call volume. So, I think that from my perspective, they're doing a stellar job to balance that with the needs that we have to serve our community. Thank you very much.
I, too, have seen a lot more activity. I've also had a lot of citizens to report to me the same findings, so, which is a great thing.
Thank y'all.
Absolutely. Thank you. Howe Fire Department, Chief Manade.
Mayor, council, good evening. The month of June, the Howe Fire Rescue ran a total of 65 calls for service involving multiple calls. As Chief Sullivan said, the highway is getting busier and busier and smaller and smaller with the barriers and stuff. We've also been out there with them. They've helped us. We helped them. It's wonderful having teams that can work together. Great way they do. But the traffic is going to be picking up. The car wrecks are going to be picking up, so please be careful as you travel through there. We've been busy preparing for some more upcoming training classes that we're doing. We actually have three of our fire crew going to Teaks at College Station next week for Texas Municipal Fire School for Agriculture Rescue. So, they'll be doing any kind of incidents with tractors, combines, backhoes, skid steers, things like that to help with lifting, moving. People get stuck. People get trapped in them. So, they'll be back with specialized certificates and that. So, we're looking forward to adding that to the toolbox also that we have. We're still making policy changes. We are advancing and updating policies from the past, so we've been moving good with that. We actually just started, this is, we will begin our two-year renewal. We actually just started this two-year renewal for EMS license, provider license for our ambulances. So, that will be done by September 1st, so we should be good to go. It's not due till October 1st, so we'll be 100% renewed and good for our EMS license. We also have, with good news, we completed our annual recertification for our TCFP for our fire side of it. We have a, received the full compliance, so we are now able to hire, train, keep up with certificates of our Texas Commission of Fire Protection certificates for our firefighters. So, that's a big thing that's been going on. We also completed our annual recertification process of our air packs, our SCBA's, our breathing machine, our breathing air that we use in fires, and our cascade system, which is our refilling station that's in the station. So, everything's been renewed, recertified, and we are good to go with that, with the processes of TCFP renewal with that. We've still, we've got a couple certification, online certification classes going right now. We've got most of our guys in Fire Academy. Our last one just started today. So, our EMS personnel will all be completely fire certified by December 1st. So, they'll be cross-trained and good, and we're gonna add more firefighters to the department. So, please stay hydrated with the heat as call volumes for heat exhaustion and heat stroke will rise. Please be careful as you do stuff outside and stay hydrated. Any questions?
Counsel? Questions? Comments? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. City Secretary, Ms. Hewitt?
Mayor, council. Our phone system is now in place, and it's been updated and it is operational. We're happy with the new system that we have. Our mobile meter reading is also up and running, and all of our technicians have had training on it and are using it actively. I will be working on a destruction log and retention schedule for the council to review and hopefully adopt at the next meeting. We don't have one in place currently. Journal entries are now current. We'll be scheduling a training session with our audit consultants to correct coding of line items based on the proposed new budget. I've also begun working on the 2023 and 2022, 2024 audit with our consultants. We disposed approximately 30 boxes of files that were past their retention period. Permit training is scheduled to be completed by myself and Candace, who is our new permit clerk, no later than the end of this month. Amy Bond is no longer with the City of Howe. Joy Stevens is no longer with the City of Howe. Candace Coughlin is our new permit clerk, and she's doing well. She's been catching up on backlog of permits. Jessica Salcedo is our new court clerk, and even though I'm so proud of her, even though she hasn't had any prior court experience, she has caught on so quickly to FundView. To know, we went live with FundView in February, and no citations were entered into the new system. In the week and a half that she's been entering citations, she's entered in over 300. So, I'm so very proud of her, and I'm so happy that she's on our team. Both of them have completed utility billing training on FundView, and they are now actively taking payments and helping our utility team. Any questions?
Counsel? Questions or comments? I'm excited to see that the audit, or the, yeah, we're working on the audit for the 23, 24. Finally getting caught up.
We're getting there, mayor. We're getting there.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Works and City Administrator, Monty?
Mayor, council. Yes, we got new phones, and I'm not sure they're operating correctly cuz mine is ringing way too much. Okay. Now, the Public Works Department, it shows here that they carried out 49 service orders. That is wrong. There was a glitch in that reporting system. They carried out way, way more than that. So, I don't want you to think that they're sloughing off because that's certainly not the fact. That's just what was actually logged. Five new meters were set, six meter leaks repaired, used a quarter of a ton of pothole padding, pothole patching, 10 water main leaks, and that's a lot. That is unsustainable. But these guys are working hard to repair those leaks, and we've had to outsource several of them because of the, of how big they were. Two disconnections for move-outs. They had 38 hours of mowing. They do, they do a great job keeping the place downtown and Summit Gardens looking good at all times. Three sewer main backups that they worked on. As far as the city administrator position, you know, we've got, I go over these every month, but we've got a lot of developments in place. You know, it takes, it takes a long time to get from point A to point B on these developments. So, they're gonna remain kinda in, in place for a while until we can get these development agreements fought through. NRP is under construction, that multifamily 300-door unit. You can see it on the highway. that multifamily three-hundred-door unit. You can see it on the highway. Noble Ridge, One B, Lennar Homes has turned in nine permits, I think, for that already, or maybe even more than that. Candy is doing an excellent job with those permits, and she's knocking them out. Ponderosa Point, we have commercial contracts signed with Seven-Eleven and Taco Bell. We have another opportunity at Blythe Road we'll talk about. I really can't disclose at this point, but another similar commercial venture at Blythe Road, which is, it's pretty exciting. Hilltop Ranch, thirteen-hundred-and-seventy-six homes. Their plat is on the agenda tonight for approval, preliminary plat. We updated the PD last week, last month. Saddleback's first home is underway on Bandera Drive. We're still nearing, you know, working through agreements with Howe Meadows, where they formed a mud on the west side of Howe, on the west side of Smith Road. Talbot Estate, sixty-five half-acre lots. Now, we're working on an annexation with them, and this is the one we're trying to get water through our Central Park to take to them so we can annex them. We're having, you know, part of that property is split with Luella Water, and the majority is ours. So about eighty-five percent is ours, about fifteen percent is Luella. The mayor and I went to Luella's board meeting last night. We made a presentation to acquire the remainder of that property, their CCN. And we got word today that all we have to do is fill out the CCN paperwork, and we'll move forward on that, and then we'll be able to supply water through that entire development, and then hopefully move forward with annexation and have a new subdivision out there. We're in early stages, very, very early stages, with a ninety-six, ninety-eight project. It's eight-hundred-and-forty-four lots. We're talking with Astra Companies, three-hundred-and-fifty-five lots. Professional Service Agreement is on the agenda for tonight. There's another project at nine-oh-two and Bennett. We've had one meeting with. It looks, it's a familiar developer that we're very, very happy with, and we hope they go through with that. All of our street projects are completed, except for the Young Street, which is underway. That's a sewer line replacement very deep under the road, and then they'll come back and they'll redo that street. Personnel, we have one new permit clerk, Candy Coughlin, who comes from the city of Prosper. I guess it's actually the town of Prosper officially down there. We have a new court clerk, Jessica Salsito. Chief Sullivan told you he filled his vacant officer position with Justin Light, who will start on July twenty-eighth. And as far as wastewater, we hear that BVRT is close to finalizing the land purchase. And the only bad thing about BVRT is we got to get them some Crimson shirts instead of those Longhorn things. Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Motion denied.
So they, you know, they've come up with some creative solutions for us that the mayor and I have discussed with them, and we'll bring that to you at some point about maybe even getting open sooner than what we had originally anticipated. So we'll talk about that as we have more conversations there. Water, we've located some areas on North Hughes Street and Carter Street that require auto flushers to remove the stagnant water. So anytime you see, or anytime I see anybody posting brown-yellow water on Facebook, because you see them every so often, I can tell you exactly where they live, because there's two spots in town where we have that issue. So it's either Carter Street or Hughes Street typically. So we, Jerry has done a great job of locating those lines over there and has ordered auto flushers. One was just malfunctioning. He got that one working. So Carter Street, I believe, shouldn't have the issues that they've had over the previous couple of months, since that was malfunctioning. We've got another one coming on Hughes Street, which will take care of that. Let's see. Well two has undergone, that's the one over here on, near Cassandra Street, it's undergone significant upgrades. And it'll be able to produce groundwater at a normal rate of speed or normal rate of production. Our goal here is to use as much groundwater as possible from well two, well three, and well four, and use GTUA as a supplement during our peak seasons during the summer when people are using irrigation systems and things like that. Our customers love the groundwater. I'm one of them. So we're going to try to use that, plus it doesn't cost us as much. So we're going to try to use it as much as we can, but we've got to have all of our wells functioning properly. And well two is about to be there. We've got some analyzers on order, so they'll work well with our SCADA system on all three points, and we'll be able to be in great shape there. I may have mentioned this last month. I've been asked to moderate the DFW Retail Mixed Use and DFW Industrial Forum for the industrial portion of that. You know, that's a, that's a huge honor to be able to, to be asked to do that. That's in September. EDC is a sponsor of that at platinum level. There's a contract on seven acres at Duke Street, on East Duke Street, around the curve, where the road is really, really, really bad. That'll give us the opportunity to repair some of that, for the developer to do some road repair when that develops. It's intended for Flex Warehouse, which will give us some places to put some commercial tenants. Sales tax for the city of Howe for the month of June came to fifty-seven thousand, ninety-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Of that amount, fourteen thousand, two seventy-four, forty-seven will be deposited to the EDC. And we moved thirty-five thousand dollars from the EDC to the logic government pool this morning so we can capitalize on some of those, those interest payments. Utility billing, total amount billed for the current month was two-hundred-and-thirty-four, for June was two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, one eighteen thirty-four. That's a good, healthy month. Number of utility bills was thirteen eighteen, so that's on the rise as we grow. That's a good sign. We'll kind of scan through the rest of this because it's utility billing and monthly usage. You can see it kind of broken down. Seven, seven million, five-hundred-and-ninety-one and thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-nine gallons for the month of July, which was the end of June. So let me look at animal control. There was a noticeable uptick in calls for animal control, a lot of dispatches, but you're, you know, pretty, pretty routine, you know, patrolling and unfortunately not being able to find a whole lot because of the distance between locations. So that is your city administrator report. Y'all have any questions?
Counsel, questions, comments for Mr. Walker?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Moving on to our action items. Two, discuss, consider, and act upon investment report. Mr. Walker?
Mayor, Council. Due to an inordinate amount of rain, and I think we can all in this room understand how much rain we've had this spring and early summer, accompanied with, you know, major well repairs that we've had, water main breaks. We've had to transfer four-hundred thousand from our TechStar Sewer Fund over the last three months. So we've been billed by the city of Sherman, a total amount of five-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, one ninety-nine oh one over that three-month period, which is two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-three seventeen, more than what we charged our citizens. So as you can see, that is not sustainable, and it is because of our rain, that we, the amount of rain that we've had. So I'm thankful that BVRT is in the house, and Tag, you're it.
Yes.
You know, the plan is to replenish those funds that we've, we've had to transfer from our sewer fund as we reach the drier season, whenever that may be, and we'll be able to replenish those funds. And some of those funds were not just sewer. Some of those were GTUA. Some of them were, a lot of the well breaks, our main breaks and well repair. So our infrastructure is getting a lot of cash right now, which it should, but it's getting an inordinate amount of cash at this point. But for the month of June, we accrued ten thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and five cents in interest with all of our city-owned accounts. This EDC accrued fourteen-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. Logic is currently paying four-point-one, I'm sorry, four-point-four-one percent, while TechStar is yielding four-point-two-nine percent. So those are good, healthy rates at this point. We still, at some point, anticipate rate change from the Fed one day, and of course, that will help the home buyers and the home sellers. It will reduce our rate of return a little bit, but at some point, something's got to break. When your, your inflation is one-point-six percent, but your interest rates are four and a half through the Fed, that doesn't equate. So something's got to change there. So we anticipate that over the next month or two. That's the investment report.
Does the council have any questions or comments on the investment report? And if not, do I have a motion to accept this investment report?
I'll motion to accept.
Billy makes a motion to accept. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ricky makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. Item number two, discuss, consider, and act upon renewing terms for planning and zoning board members, Nicole Fay, Sharon Carroll, and Brandon McKinney. These are for two-year terms, and I realize that Nicole was just appointed to the Planning and Zoning Board, but she was finishing out a previous member's term. If the council does not have any discussion on this, do I have a motion to accept the renewing terms for board members Nicole Fay, Sharon Carroll, and Brandon McKinney?
All three are wanting to stay on?
Yes.
Let's give them what they ask for. I motion to approve.
Billy makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I heard Ricky. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. Item number four, discuss, consider, and act upon Larry Stevenson to replace the seat of Ed Whitfield on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So as we all are aware, Mr. Ed Whitfield has joined us here up at the council, and so Larry Stevenson is in the audience here, and so I'm recommending Larry Stevenson. Does the council wish to discuss this item, and if not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Ricky makes a motion to accept. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Chad makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson.
Yes. I'm going to swear him in in just a few minutes. Discuss, five, discuss, consider, and act upon preliminary plat for Hilltop Ranch. Monty did speak on this earlier, but council, I don't know if you heard, but if you need him to, or Tim to go over it, speak up, please. And if no one needs to have any discussion on it, you're welcome to make a motion.
I'll motion to approve.
All right. Sean is making a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
That was Ed?
Yes.
Okay. Ed makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. Number six, discuss, consider, and act upon preliminary plat and final plat for Bethel Baptist Church Division. Again, this was discussed earlier during the P and Z meeting. If you need further discussion, we're happy to let Mr. Walker or our engineer, he's here to discuss those items. And if not, do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Billy makes a motion to approve. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Sean makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. Action item number seven, discuss, consider, and act upon professional service agreement with Astra Investments G.P. LLC. Monty, do you want to?
Mayor, Council, this has become routine. City staff has been working initially with Astra Investments on a development located between Howe High School and Curtis Lane, Lane Drive subdivision. This professional service agreement allows the Astra team members to converse directly with our attorneys and our engineers through a fee process, generally outlined that they will deposit funds with us to keep as earnest money. And then as they converse with Tim and James, you know, they'll get, they'll get those invoices and we'll subtract that out. So as we move forward with this development, it is pretty crucial that we have this PSA agreement in place. So city staff recommends approval.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? And if not, do we have a motion?
Have we worked with them before?
We've had a few conversations. I don't think the council has been privy just yet.
Are they, are they involved in the area? Are they, are they good for us?
I think it's going to be a good development, what I've seen so far. Yeah.
Any other council members have questions or comments? Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Billy makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ricky makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. Action item number eight, discuss, consider, and act upon Encore rate increase. Mr. Walker?
This is another routine item. You know, we pay a steering committee to advise us on these Encore rates. This is what it looks like when the rate increase comes out. We've been advised to not accept the rate increase from Encore.
You've been, did you say advised to not?
We've been advised to not accept the rate increase.
To not accept it. Okay. Does the council wish to discuss this item any further? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion not to accept the pay rate increase.
Ricky makes a motion to not accept the rate increase. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Sean is making a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. Number nine, discuss, consider, and act upon renewing terms of the Howe EDC board members, Sharla Ross, Brandon Grooms, and Kent Louder. These are also terms for two years. Does the council wish to discuss these items, and if not, do I have a motion? And yes, they all are up for it. We're not forcing it on them.
I'll motion to approve these members for renewing their terms.
All right. Sean makes a motion to approve these members for their next term. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ed makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. Passes. Ten, discuss, consider, and act upon allowing the Howe EDC to contract with Munson Law Firm for potential real estate transaction. Does the council wish to discuss any of this? Do you want to?
I thought he was.
Does the council, would you like any further information on this? Comments or questions?
So Project Hotel is just a military fanatic. So, Project Hotel is just a military phonetic, correct? It was just the next one up in line. It is not a hotel, correct?
I can't say. It's just a term for what we're, yeah. We, as the EDC, there's a lot of confidentiality involved in some negotiations. So, a lot of times, you put a project name on such type of development, and that's what we've done here. The EDC is working on a project, which we have dubbed Project Hotel. A term sheet has been agreed upon for a purchase, and now, the EDC wants to move forward to get a contract. And in order to get the contract, we need to go through what has been advised to us to use a certain person at Munson Law Firm for this transaction.
I will add to that, that our attorney, Mr. Tedwell, recommended that we get a real estate attorney for this particular transaction. Does the council wish to discuss this further? Oh, yes.
And just for full disclosure, at some point, the property will be coming in front of the council and the public once things have been agreed upon.
Just trying to quell the, oh, we're building a hotel. Or we have pot halls, but we're building a hotel.
Any other comments or questions from the council, and if not, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ricky is making a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Chad is making a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. Number eleven, discuss, consider and act upon adopting the 2021 International Building Codes with an effective date of August 1, 2025.
Mayor, I think we need, well, we do need to table this until next month. This requires an ordinance for adoption, so we will put that together for the agenda next month.
Okay, so we will table this item.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Billy makes a motion to table, and Sean makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. All right. I'm going to quickly swear in our new Planning and Zoning Commission board member. I will just tell you all as well that we will not be having an executive session this evening. We have decided we do not need that, but we will, going to swear Mr. Stevenson in real quick. And if you will, raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I hereby swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Howe Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Howe, State of Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So, thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you serving. All right. Again, no need for executive session tonight, therefore, we will be skipping this part of the meeting. So, we will move on to action item number twelve. Discuss, consider and act upon any items from executive session. And since we are not doing that, we are going to need to table this item. Do I have a motion to table?
I'll motion to table.
Sean makes a motion to table. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Billy makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. And last item is our budget workshop. Everyone is welcome to stay, but there's no vote on this. And so, if you don't want to stay, you don't need to. But we, again, it's just discussion, but you're welcome to stay. Do you have a, here, I'll pull mine up on the computer. Okay.
I see the colors.
He's going to get food ready for you tonight.
Have a good night. Thank you all for being here. I guess the way to clear a room is to say we're having discussion about the budget. You don't need to. Talk about money.
All right. So, we will start from the beginning. You'll notice the very first
Monty, can we say something first, just for the new council members, that maybe you mentioned that we are required to, like, have these workshops for the budget. So, again, we're not making any decision tonight, so we won't do that until the final budget comes along. Sorry, just making sure
Yeah.
they kind of understood where we were at.
What we'll do is, we'll have a discussion tonight, and then, next month, we'll have a preliminary budget we'll need to pass. And then, in the September meeting, we'll have a final budget we'll need to pass. So, tonight's just to kind of go over things. How we've done this is we put together our department heads to submit a budget for their departments, and then, I work on a lot of the admin, and then, I work with them on things that are necessary and things that are unnecessary, more of a wants and needs assessment of what, where we're at within our departments. The very first thing you might look at is the first line there. It says, "Ad valorem tax" in the revenue part department. And these are broken into revenues and then one group of expenditures. So, general fund revenues, you might notice that the ad valorem tax number is the same as it was a year ago. We do anticipate that being more. We just haven't got that figure yet from the appraisal district, and I didn't want to put in a fictitious number. So, I put in the same number from a year ago, knowing that we'll have some flexibility there, but not knowing what amount of flexibility we'll have. So, when you get down to the bottom of the last page, it's going to show an upside-down number of two hundred sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars when you compare overall revenues to expenses. However, we anticipate that ad valorem tax to make up, you know, that difference. And if it doesn't, we'll be making cuts.
And council, if you guys have any questions as we go along, please, just don't hesitate to jump out there and ask or make comments, because that's probably going to be the easiest way.
And I won't go, I won't bore you to death going line by line. So, yeah, please, please speak up if you have any questions. One thing I haven't accounted for, because we haven't got our CCN mapped out with BVRT just yet and those things transferred. We do have some franchise revenue, franchise tax revenue coming from BVRT that will come during this budget cycle, but I haven't put that number in there either. It's not a whole lot. In a full year, it'd be somewhere around fifty thousand. But, that's not reflected in here either. So, that'll affect the bottom line in a positive way for us, once we are able to address that. So, sales tax is obviously a big factor. With where we're pacing right now as a city, that's a pretty healthy bump of five hundred and forty thousand compared to three hundred and twenty thousand a year ago. We still anticipate transferring money to reserve every month for a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. You know, it shows us revenue, but we're using that as a savings. So, and also, we're now using logic for our reserves, so we're drawing a lot better interest than what we were. So, some of these things you'll see that are highlighted in yellow, and those are just internal GL codes and things that we need to move around. Over the years, this budget was, you know, mingled together in some certain areas where it really needs to be addressed, re-approached and separated out to where it, items that should be, like municipal court was all bundled in with the admin in the past. Well, that needs to be extracted to its own itemized category. So, we're doing some things like that. So, Michelle has some work to do also with FunView and getting those categories lined out before we enter this into the system. So, the expenditures and the admin, you know, the things that jump out there are the building inspector at three hundred and thirty-three thousand, you know, that is our Bureau Veritas expense when we have all these new homes going up. They have to go inspect them. They have to plan or view, all of that thing, all of those things. So, that's that cost, but we do have permit fees also that factor into that.
I just want to point out too, that the more itemized it is, the better we can keep track of where the money is going.
Right. Yeah.
And that's important.
The tidier, the better.
Yes.
So, you know, we do have those permit fees coming in that cover those, you know, eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars in permit fees on the revenue side, three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in building inspector fees. So, that, you know, that's a big portion of our revenue as well. Over in debt service, our INS, that is what we pay in bond payments. Interest and sinking is what that stands for. So, the one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, sixty-six dollars, fifteen cents is what we will pay this year in our bond payments. So, those wash out. You can see where we extracted municipal court into its own category, a revenue of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred, an expense of ninety-one thousand, seven hundred. You know, we anticipate an uptick in our court. Not that we're mentioning any words, Mr. Ingram.
But I do love that you put in your monthly report self-generated activity. I love that.
There is a master plan to all this from that perspective. Some staff changes have been made in the Department of Commerce. I think we see a drastic increase in that number, which obviously helps us from a financial perspective for the budget. As y'all see it before, most of our citations are not to what we call local residents, and we look at local residents and recent current residents. So, you know, the forty thousand cars kind of cleared through the highway with the service roads and they go on and drive actually to some of the
So, with the police department running, you know, full speed as they are, and with the type of citations that they've issued, we feel like we'll have a little bit of bump in court fines and court fees. And that'll help, obviously, our tech fund and our court security fund and our collections, obviously. So, we do have court expenses that we send to the state every month, court taxes and things like that. Of course, that will go up too, because we anticipate more citations. Police Department, now, we've grown that budget, as you can see, from eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand to a million fifteen. So, that's a pretty good leap, but I think, you know, we can all agree that they were severely lacking in technology and gear and just about everything that they had over there. One item that Chief Sullivan has on a wish list, I would say, he would say need, I might say wish, is the buildings, you know, we've moved court over here, which opens up a lot of space for him over there. If we have to get in a situation where we have to start looking at cuts, and I hope we don't, you know, expanding the police department and making more offices and things over there might be, and I know he doesn't close your ears, that might be one of those things that gets addressed. But, I think Chief Sullivan would probably agree. We've done everything we can to help remedy all those situations at the police department. So, I thank you, the council, for allowing us to update our PD in a number of ways, info technology and all kinds of safety aspects, so.
Anybody have questions so far? Just checking in.
Okay. Street expenditure looks pretty much the same, almost identical, as last year. We still have one hundred and sixty-two thousand, three nineteen, sixty-six in street repair, and that means street projects. When you have that amount, that sometimes goes quickly. You can use sixteen thousand here, you can use twenty thousand here, or you can address the Swanner situation at one time, which needs to be addressed. So, I anticipate looking at a healthy expense of just Swanner Street, or Swanner Drive in that Western Hills area, because it is really bad.
And I think that's long overdue.
It is, and we may have some help from developers on some other street items that aren't budgeted here. Some of the developments that we talked about earlier that have to have, you know, some that we're trying to annex, you know, if they were to stay in the county and not annex, they would have a certain road fee that they would be required to make in concrete and all of that stuff. So, we're looking at creative options to take that same valuation that they would be spending with the county instead coming with us and taking a similar amount, maybe even much less, and be able to do a lot more within the City of Howe with that money. So, those are the kind of things, when we look at that annexation, those are the things that we're looking at. And I don't want to get anybody's hopes up or anything, but, you know, that project could produce an entire stretch of Duke Street from the service road all the way to the railroad tracks, if we're able to do that right. Now, don't hold me to that, but that's the kind of thing that we're looking at. So, we've, you know, we've got to be creative with our funding. So, we're separating, you know, we're not getting the park fees this year. So, when you look at the bottom line, yeah, the total revenue is not what it was a year ago, and that's because of the park fees. The NRP Group paid eight hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars of park fees last year. We're not going to come close to that. We'll end up with thirty thousand, and that's a conservative number. We may move past that. And we probably will move past that, but that's a very conservative number. But I'd like to deal with these budgets on a conservative manner. So, that's the main difference in the bottom line is the park fees. So, that's the main difference in the bottom line is, is the park fees.
And I want to just note on that too, just to remind everyone, that park fees has to be, can only be used for parks.
Correct.
We can't use that in general funding.
And so, when we're running, you know, when we're talking about annexing the property on Old Highway Six, we can actually use park fees to run that water line, because they're running through our park. And so, that, that allowed us to be able to annex, to have conversations about annex, annexing that development. We do have a library contract that we, that, uh, we're responsible for in the community service portion. I did budget animal control at the same amount as we're paying now until we find a better option. You know, Mr. Hill would not be very happy with that if he were still up there, but we just don't have another option right now, but we're, we're continuing to try to find options. Um, the mowing contract is in there with Bobcat at the same amount as it was a year ago, because that's under contract. Uh, now we get to EMS and fire. Now, this is, as we know, and we knew this when we adopted this early on, this is a budget killer. Um, it, it, there's just no way around it, but you have to be able to service the people with, with fire protection and EMS. And so, I'm grateful to Chief Manay, who's been able to kind of spearhead this, this department and run it as a fine-tuned machine, as he has. One thing that has, that he's done really well this year, is he's been really trying to tackle getting EMS, um, county fire, or county, county ambulance contract. I've got a dollar figure in here, and we don't know what that number will be. It could be less, it could be more, but we think, you know, we're on the dartboard of what that number is. So, I know Chief Manay probably would not like for me to put that in there, because it hasn't happened yet, but, um, I feel comfortable with the work he's put forward, that we'll be able to get that. Now, I'm not going to blame him if we don't get it, but I think with the work he's done with county, I, I think, uh, I think we'll see that. Now, the fire department billing, you know, about fifteen thousand, that, that stays the same. We're going to keep the ambulance billing at the same, because we didn't know what the number was going to be when we started, and we put a, a healthy figure of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out there in revenue for ambulance billing, and I, I believe we've hit that. If not, we're real close, we've hit it, we hit it. So, um, I'll probably adjust that up just a little bit, because we have two months to go. So, we'll, we'll make an adjustment on the ambulance billing, maybe, uh, ten or twelve or fifteen thousand or so on that. We'll look at that and see what the actual average is. So, the expenditures is where the healthy number is, and the big number is the salaries, and that's the EMS salaries. Now, by per hour rate, you know, they don't make a huge amount of money per hour, okay? But they, their overtime and the way it is scheduled, and there's just no other way to stagger these individuals to have full coverage on a twenty-four hour basis, other than those six employees rotating to where they have overtime. So, a lot of that is overtime. But that's just, that's the nature of the beast when you're in the EMS business, and we're in the EMS business. So, that, that's the way it is. We will continue to look at other angles and other opportunities to where we can cut that down, um, but at this point, that's where we are. Things that stand out, you know, a little bit more than last year, the uniforms, uh, it was four thousand last year, it's nine thousand this, this year, and I was reminded today, because it was asked of me, um, and I was thinking that it was, I know some, we're going to upgrade some fire gear, but that's another line item, but we're, uh, this is for the bulletproof vest, um, and if anybody has a, a question on that, I would direct them to Chief Manay, because I don't know why you need a bulletproof vest as a fire department, but he does.
That wildfire a couple of weeks ago, the wildfire a couple of weeks ago that was sent in as an ambush, that's why they...
That's true. That's a very good point. That's a very good point. Yeah, that was in the news recently. Yeah, so...
So, the other part of it is, we have to, is that we have to take it with us to supply tree yards, we, we have to make sure that they are protected. Uh, the other part of that is, is we were working on, uh, fire department, we're training their team to make sure they're specifically trained for those type of events, and so we got to make sure we got the vehicles, the vests, the personnel, who are bringing them fall off.
So, um, Chief Manay, are, how many vests will that include? Is that like one vest per employee?
That'll give, that'll give us two vests to put on our man. So, the EMS crew that's on duty that day will have, they will each have their own vest in the, so that's two vests. They're about twenty-five hundred dollars at least.
Okay.
We have some plate carriers that we were working on, trying to get with them as well, so we have some plate carriers and plate carriers that we use for rifle rated, uh, uh, protection, because that's where our main concern is. So, we're trying to use other resources without necessarily getting the check, but to, to make sure that our EMS fires are relatively...
Sure. I think it's important to have...
See, you don't always like to spend money, like you say.
I think it's important to have those vests for the safety of our, of the employees, for sure.
Why, the EMS fund being it's not a matter of when, it's, it's not if, it's when.
So, it, we may need to be thinking in the, later down the road though, to add to that, it sounds like.
I think, I think too, start is a good, is a good starting spot. It's not great for the bank necessarily by volumes. Ten.
Sure.
To get the general sizes, keep them on there all the time, and then the crew will rotate.
Absolutely, okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Moving on to solid waste, um, I've actually got a different number on here, as I was crunching them this afternoon, so I'll make an adjustment to that, uh, revenue side. We're looking at four hundred and eighty-five thousand, so that's a significant jump. However, when you get to the expenditure side, our contract services also jumped by about the same amount. So, I, I put four hundred and twenty thousand dollars in, in expenditures, four hundred and eighty-five in revenue, so just about the same there, but I'm going to continue to crunch those to where we get more of an exact number. But we used to be charged about twenty-nine thousand a month with rate increases, and with the amount of dumpsters that we're, we're using at the NRP construction sites, and these developers are using more and more and more dumpsters, so, um, we paid thirty-nine thousand this past month, but we also picked that up on the revenue side, because we passed that through. So, that's why those numbers have jumped a little bit from last year. Uh, we do have, uh, part-time code enforcement, who is in the solid waste, his, his, uh, salary is in the solid waste fund. On wastewater, looking at more actual numbers, where we are, um, I can't, I can't, I wish I could, I wish I could predict a situation where, where we had a healthy margin in wastewater. Um, we do have, you know, we've penciled in a margin there, you know, it's a, it's a thin one, and it, it probably needs a little bit more pencil, now that we've had these last two months, three months, that's been absolutely insane. So, I'll take a look at those and tighten that up a little bit, because, you know, I was working on this budget prior to this last month's bill, which was outrageous. So, I will, uh, I'll send that out, and I'll keep everyone updated on what those numbers look like. The main expense out of wastewater, you can see, is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's our contract management, that's for J and J. And by the way, uh, I will say that that J and J group is, is, has been a great situation for us. Can't say enough about those guys. On the water revenues...
Can I say something real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
Real quick, um, on that, I just want to point out, I mentioned to Monty earlier today, is that I agree with him on the J and J contract, and if y'all have noticed, we have not, we, our public works department, we have not had a big turnover. We've had, we've kept the same employees. So, that tells me there's really great leadership in that department, they're doing a good job, and our employees like it. So, and they're getting work done. I just want to point that out.
It's not uncommon for me to get a phone call or a text on Friday or Saturday night from these guys, letting me know something's going on. They keep me well informed. Unfortunately, it's always a disaster, but, but, but they're there, and they're working on it.
They're doing a great job.
Water revenues, uh, I'm looking at where we are actually and projecting out. This shows a little bit of a decrease from last year. Again, these are conservative numbers. I don't anticipate it being less than last year, when, when it, when the full numbers come in at the end of the year, but I certainly wouldn't want to put a goal we can't obtain. So, um, a million, one nineteen, twenty-one, uh, we do anticipate eighteen thousand in tap fees, possibly even more than that. So, one point two million in revenues. Now, this department is very costly, because this is where all our wells are, these are where all the water main leaks are, this is where our GTUA contract is, um, and then, you know, obviously salaries take up a big portion of, of, of any budget, uh, and, you know, with salaries come health insurance and liability insurance, and, but equipment maintenance, you see that it's cut down from one seventy-three to eight oh one. Last year, we had some items in equipment ma- maintenance that really probably shouldn't have been there, like a backhoe purchase, um, so we shuffle things around to make it a true cleaner number. So, equipment maintenance, those are things like your analyzers for the wells, and hopefully we won't have those costs, because we've upgraded so much this year, which has cost us an enormous amount of money, but hopefully we'll be able to alleviate those situations in the next fiscal year by not having to upgrade constantly like we have. So, equipment maintenance, ninety-five thousand is a big one. Uh, the take or pay contract with GTUA, you know, ob- obviously four hundred and thirty-two thousand, that's a big portion of that. The guys really need some equipment. They really do. They need a, a Mini-X really badly, and, uh, there's some other items that, that they even want that would help them, uh, more so than the Mini-X, but I've budgeted fifty That may be a situation where it is a three-year lease on a piece of equipment that takes fifty thousand over the next three years, in order to get them what they need. But they're so far behind in the equipment that they have, that they actually need. So, those are not wants from those guys, those are, those are definite needs. So, um, we'll continue to help them the best that we can, you know, as, 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 as we grow. We, we do have a vehicle operation for them, we do have a vehicle lease that we've purchased vehicles for them, so they're, they are getting some upgrades in vehicles. So, the overall expenditures, as we look at the, the big snapshot here, um, the general fund has increased to one point four million in our expenditures. I guess we should look at revenue first. On the revenue side, two point nine seven, two point nine million in general fund, um, hundred and eighty-two thousand, as we mentioned, in debt service, municipal court, two twenty-six, four hundred. Uh, we don't have the revenue shown in the police department, as, that's more than municipal court side. Uh, EMS and fire is four hundred and seven thousand. The EDC washes out, we didn't go over that, but that's a hundred and ninety-four thousand. Uh, they plan on a lot of that budget going towards construction and land purchase, on what we talked about earlier, the, the project hotel. On the community side, thirty thousand, um, that's because of the parks, we're not, we're not getting the park fees that we did. And then solid waste, four hundred and eight thousand, wastewater fi- uh, nine forty-nine, water, one point two million. And then the Collins Memorial Fund, this building on leases, or rentals, is fourteen thousand, five hundred. The expenditures, one point four in the general fund, uh, the same amount in debt service as revenue, municipal court, ninety-one thousand, seven hundred, uh, police, uh, just over a million, a million fifteen thousand, eight oh five sixty-three, to be exact. E- EMS and fire, eight sixteen, four fourteen, seventy-seven. The EDC is the same as the revenue. Streets, two fifty-five, three nineteen. Community is one fifteen, two thirty-four. Solid waste, four twenty-six, nine oh five. Wastewater, a little bit, almost one point one million, and then the water is one point two and a half million. And then the Collins Memorial Fund, thirteen thousand, two hundred, which takes us currently to an overall revenue of, uh, just at six point six million, and an expenditure of six point eight, six nine million. So, that leaves us upside down by two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, as I mentioned right off the top. We think the ad valorem will help us recover that amount. There's some other items in here that will help us recover that amount, franchise fee that we talked, uh, about with BBRT will add to that. Hopefully, we don't have to get into situations where we have to cut a lot.
When will we have a better idea of what the, uh, ad valorem will be?
Uh, the end of this month, the appraisal district will release our tally sheets, and we'll kind of know from there. We'll have an idea of what our tax rate needs to be at that time. So, I'm planning on presenting a no new revenue tax, as we did last year, um, going from there. Uh, and we, I, I honestly believe that if we take the no new revenue tax and what the appraisal district will get us, uh, in our ad valorem, I think we'll be, we'll meet that, if not exceed it. But at this time, I just wanted you to be aware, those are our overall expenditures. So, don't panic when you see that.
Counsel, questions, comments, suggestions? Donations?
Make sure you get that one in there.
Right. Yeah. Pass the hat.
Make the check payable to the city of Howe.
That's all I've got.
All right. If there's no further business to come before this council, this meeting stands adjourned at seven twenty-eight PM. Have a good evening.
Thank you.